It is 6:30. We're going to call this workshop session of Lewisville City Council to order. We do have a quorum. Do want to remind everybody if that green saucer is lit up above us, it can hear you even if you're standing way over there. So first thing up is the session of the regular agenda items and consent agenda items. We've got a few things that we've got to close session for, one of them being item D1.
Mary, did you want to go into close right now?
Do you want to do that now?
We can do it now or later.
Let's go ahead and do it at the end of reviewing the rest of them. So we're going to skip D1.
D2.
D2. Renaming. And Claire, this is just to get it all official with text out, right?
Yes, sir.
And I think we're not going to do the embossing. We're going to do the paint instead because it gave us liability for the entire bridge.
The stick-on letters.
Letters, yeah. Stick-on letters, okay, got it.
What are they going to come back with next?
I know, right? It'll be another game.
It's like, "Sorry, but they did." Every time we make a decision, they come back with something.
All right. Consent agenda, item 3. Item 4. Item 5.
There's a question on item 5. Is Russell, is there just not anybody else other than Russell Madden that does that kind of work? Is that why we want to get one bid?
Good question. Kelly?
What was the question?
I saw Russell Madden bid again, but is there not anybody else out there that was interested in that type of work? Is it just them?
I know that there were, I want to say it was 17 downloads on that bid item, but Russell Madden was the only one that actually put it up.
Interesting. I need to go beat the bushes a little.
Is there something that we need to know about?
No, I guess he's just interested in that. He's only one that, he knows the city, but why wouldn't anybody else want to do the work? Kind of deal.
Item 6.
Question on this. So, did he come forward and say he couldn't make it to hike out to the second or third meeting, or did he just show up for three meetings?
Shell, she's right here. Shell, do you have any information? This is one of your P&amp;Z numbers.
He did let us know in advance that he was not going to be able to make those meetings and did try detail on why, and there were various reasons.
And he's sure he can continue to make this upcoming years?
I did talk to him about improving his attendance, and he said that he thinks a lot of the conflicts have been rectified, so he'll be able to be in better.
No, he don't need to improve it. He needs to show up.
Well, I'm okay if the agenda is to reappoint him. I don't have an issue with it at all. I'm okay with showing some grace. And I had this personal, it happened to me when I first got started on CDVG. So I feel for folks in this situation because I have encountered it myself. So I think we give them one more mind to the apple, and if it doesn't work out, then it doesn't work out.
Okay.
I don't think they put, I don't think he's put P&amp;Z in a bind for votes or anything.
No, she said no.
We good with that? Regular hearing, item 7.
Yeah, I noticed it was an emergency, an emergency process. I was wondering why that was. I saw because it has to be health and welfare.
So emergency, the emergency clause in the ordinance?
That's right.
We put it in all our ordinances because the charter requires us to read the caption three times at three different meetings unless it's passed through an emergency clause. So it's really just so we don't have to put it on three separate agendas.
Are you wanting to know why they're changing it?
No, I just wanted to...
You'll see it.
You're going to now see it every time it's on the agenda.
Yeah, it's always been.
It's something I've always wanted to maybe get cleaned up on the charter, but it's also one of those things that's going to be awkward to explain.
Yeah, it just feels like a misuse of an emergency process. I guess that's my concern with the charter.
Just three meetings to get anything done is burdensome.
I hear you. And yeah, cleaning up the policy is probably the right thing to do.
The charter hard, the election.
Yeah, elections, just change that version?
Yes, that's why.
Okay, all right, I'm going with it then.
Until next time.
Yeah, one more question about that as well.
Go ahead.
So the, I understand this is for efficiency purposes. We're trying to be more efficient. Would it be possible to send a letter out, just letting people know what they're writing, how to report things, rather than just letting them know? Looking for some way, I think about my couch, the scotch bar on the couch, and I never, find it never when I got to get it cleaned. So I waste money every single time. So I'm letting people need reminders. I figure that you engage, and I'm just wondering if that's possible.
Yeah, absolutely. So I think my understanding answer, Jackie Gibbs is here, and if you guys want, we have a few slides, but I can answer this question. And that was just if you wanted to have a more summary of kind of what the ordinance does. So right now, when you are a tenant and you change over your water billing, you would come to water billing, and there was information there about how to get your internal inspections, because that's really what you're concerned about, is the internal inspection.
That's right. Basically, I understand the rights and how to process.
Right, exactly. I believe it's on our website. And Jackie, have you guys done any other type of push related to contact?
Whenever we find them, and if they're not registered, I won't call it registered, but on our database, we present everything to them if they want any. They're here. It's all on the website. So we do all that.
So when they come in and they're not registered, there's a proactive, it's not just, maybe they'll see a sign over here, there's a proactive, here's your rights. Okay, thank you.
Anything further? Jackie, was there anything in your slides you wanted to cover with us?
No, not really.
Okay.
It's all in the...
Item 8. We're going to do this one in closed session as well. I see that we do have Thomas here, so he'll be here to answer questions. Item 9, architectural standards. No comments on 9. Item 10, appointments to various city boards and commissions. So I don't think we have any conflicts, but right now it looks like we're going to have on the animal services award, and I've got packets for everybody here. Take one and pass one. So if it's blue, it's a reappointment. And whoever's making this motion, that's how we're going to have to deal with this, because reappointments have to be listed as well. If it's green, it's a vacant that is, has an appointment. And if it's red, it's going to remain vacant for the time being.
Say that again. What's green?
Green is appointments. So it was an empty seat, and we're putting a new body in there. So if you guys could take a look at yours, see if there's any questions. I don't think we have any overlap.
So I think Zach Manuel's doing that.
We've got Zach, yeah.
That should be a vacancy for us.
You're going to leave library board vacant? Okay.
What about 7, Karen?
So place number 7, library board?
He has Jack Manuel twice. I remember talking about that Friday, so he's going through the library.
Yeah, he's on library now.
Second page.
Oh, thank you. And down here.
That one.
I'm taking him off to Old Town Review.
And putting him on library.
So that's going to be vacant.
Any questions on this?
Quick question. So I understand place 5 has to be an educational position. That's why it's vacant. But place 2 on, I'm sorry, Arts Advisory Board, you just not...
One of them has to be, and we discussed having to go in and change that, and one of them is, has to be a hotel rep.
So where it says education position here, that's, it should say hotel rep here, is that?
No, one of them is education, and one of them is a hotel motel rep.
Right, okay. It's very clear on the one that says education. I was just wondering if that vacant one should say hotel rep. Is that correct?
I don't think we have a hotel rep, so one of them should, they're vacant.
Yeah. But we need to talk to that, talk about that eventually at some point, because we can't get anyone to...
But not today.
She's going to throw something at me.
She's going to get us.
Bringing that back to the future.
Any other questions on these?
What's the light? That just says county?
Those are county appointees, and we have not gotten a name from, we have not gotten a name from our county officials to fill that space.
So they just stay as is right now?
They're going to stay as is right now. Yeah, and those, and yeah, you don't want to take those off, because the county has a say in the TERS. So if they suddenly don't have representation, there will be a problem there.
Now, on the TERS 1, we do not appoint anyone, because council is supposed to go in those places.
Yeah, we're moving those back into council, so.
Right. It looks like we just left them vacant, though.
Yeah, we did.
And we need to put council on there.
Yeah, we do, so.
Do we need to just...
Is that the one that Chris and I...
I think we...
No, I think we had it. And we didn't do anything, because council is supposed to be on it.
Council needs to be on it, so. Anybody interested in TERS 1?
I'll do TERS 1.
I'll do TERS 1. What number would you like? Would you like place 1?
I'll take the 4. I'll do it. Yeah, let's put you under, Bob. All right, so I've got Bob, I've got William, and I've got Ronnie for vacancies on TERS 1. I think... I think that covers it.
And just, did you find out anything about the veterinarian?
I did.
Okay.
Super. Thank you, guys, for the work on that. I know it's always a juggle. Let's see. We have reports. We have closed session. Claire, do we have anything other than the closed sessions I've already discussed?
No, sir. Do we want to...
All right. All right, so there is the discussion. We are now going to go ahead and move into closed session on item D1, consultation with attorney, Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.071. We're in closed session. Okay, so can we go back, or did I break it?
No, you can go back.
Oh, sorry. I missed, I did not turn the page. Serv Louisville, you've got 10 minutes.
Can you open up workshop again?
We got a workshop open back up at 8:51. 7:51.
6:51.
I'm so sorry. It's the heat, y'all. It is the heat. It's age. It's okay.
I to the cloud.
Pat Smith from Serv Louisville, and I want to just recognize William and Ashley as fellow board members. And Daryl Schmelz is our chief financial officer. We had planned to do an update on where we are with Serv Louisville Phase 1. Talked about Serv Louisville Phase 2, both from a planning perspective and then a financing perspective. Obviously, that's not going to happen. We'll do the best we can. And do I need to advance the slides, or can you do that? Okay, go ahead. So the good news is, today we received our final inspection from y'alls esteemed building inspectors, and we should get our CEO in the next couple of days. Next slide. So that's the vision. That vision is now fulfilled. Next slide is chronology. Want to just point out, we finished construction June 13th. Basically completed in just over three months, right on earth, $838,000. This coming Saturday, we're going to have a volunteer work day. If you happen to be out and about, we'd love to have you just stop in from 8 till noon. We'll be equipping the building and doing what we do to make it very operational. And then ribbon cutting is July 20th. You should have received the invite for that today, and it'll be at 9:00 AM. Kind of give some rough timelines on Phase 2. We've started design on that. Next slide. Just a reminder, we have this relationship. We're both, William and Ashley, Serv on the Serv Denton Board and the Serv Louisville Board. And then since last time I talked to you, we've added two new community members, Justin Huffaker with Datamax. They are a vendor of ours, and they also have made some financial contributions. And then Siang Seng is an attorney with IRS. He is a representative for the Chin community, and he has been a great conduit for us. And I want to personally thank William for making that connection. He actually lives in Farmer's Branch, but he is a, chairs this Chin Community Committee or Organization. Next slide. So partnerships, we have right now, six partners are going to open, move in in the next few months. Obviously, the Co-Care team, MHMR Tarrant County, Tarrant Air Food Bank, Boys and Girls Club, MHMR Denton County, and then Health Services North Texas just signed their letter of intent to operate their health center in Phase 2. It'll be about 7,000 square feet, full service, exactly what we have in Denton, being replicated in Louisville. And then Grocery Services North is a WIC, Women and Infant Children Grocery Store, and they are an initiative of the county. This is something that Claire and her team brought to us several months ago. We'd like to put it in Phase 1, but it's a better fit in Phase 2. And so they have signed their LOI, and we're 100% design for both health services and grocery services. Thanks. Next slide. So this is where we are with Phase 1, the different agencies. New Beginnings Church is teaming up with Tarrant Air Food Bank to operate the food pantry, the mission market. We received a $25,000 grant from Atmos Energy and to help fund the equipment, the shelving, which most of that arrived today. And so we're starting those conversations to get that up and running. We have two offices, or three offices that are open. We have prospects out for those offices and are just waiting to get them to sign the LOI. But furniture's going in today as we speak. Slide. So this is Phase 2. 95, pardon me, 19,000 square feet, two stories, 95 per floor. This is what would face evidence. HS&amp;T would be on the left, the WIC clinic, or WIC store would be on the right, and then second floor would be offices and classrooms. Thanks, Ashley. First floor, as I said, this is exactly what we have in Denton. And then the WIC grocery store is really just a large retail area with counter space and some large-scale refrigeration. And then they will also have a drive-up area, so moms can call in, order online, have their WIC card used. It's really important from a county's perspective. Our WIC engagement rate in Denton County is very low, 50%. That's, moms and kids are not exercising those benefits, and so this will help do that, especially in Louisville. Second floor, next slide, is a question mark, honestly. We had designed it for an educational institution. Not sure that's going to happen. We have a meeting with a major nonprofit based in Louisville next week, who have expressed a strong desire to expand, and so they're interested in doing that. I'm not going to release their name, because I don't want their landlord to find out that they may be looking to move. So, but I think he'll be very pleased with, if that comes to fruition. We'll know in the next couple of weeks if they want to move forward or not. It's really important we figure out what that second floor looks like before we go any farther in design. Next slide. Yeah. I don't know if we have enough time.
We can come back out.
We can come back after we go into general. So we just pop in and come back.
Okay. I think so. Give you all time to get to general.
So we're about to start going, so that we've just finished the Phase 1 and kind of where they are. Phase 2 is not attached, I think that was the question. I don't think it's attached to the other building, right?
No.
So the second part of their presentation is talking about Phase 2 and about the financing and kind of the changes of how we would be engaging with them versus a future lender. And so it's a pretty complex presentation, so I think we should wait till after and come back to this.
So we are going to pause the workshop session. We are going to take a five-minute break. We're going to start up the regular session. Once we get that done, we'll reconvene back here for the work session, and we'll close that, and then we'll go back into the regular session. Five-minute break. Go. All right. It is 7:01 PM, and we're going to call the regular session of the Lewisville City Council to order. If everyone would please join me in a moment of contemplation for those who are having some difficulties this time of year. Amen.
Yes, join me in the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
So we need to button down just a little bit more of our workshop session, so that is, we left that open. So we're going to go ahead and move back into workshop and finish Serv Denton, then we'll come back into the regular session here. You all are welcome to join us over there if there's seating, or you can stand. I mean, it's all fun.
Next slide, please. So I want to answer one simple question, and that is, what is new market tax credits? Next slide. New market tax credit's been around since the year 2000. So far, they've provided about $26 billion worth of credit. They've supported 5,300 projects in all 50 states, and about 43% of U.S. Census Trax qualify for new market tax credits. Next slide. Eligibility requirements include they have to be located in a low-income community and have a primary purpose of serving that community. They can be for-profit or not-for-profit. Most people think of this as not-for-profit. It can also be used for-profit, and often is. And it's used to finance real estate, equipment, and other eligible assets. Next slide. Common uses include mixed and retail properties, new war rehab, manufacturing, food processing, agriculture, healthcare, office, and professional services. Next slide. The problem with new market tax credits is the economics of it are really quite simple, but if you look at the detail, it just, the economics get hidden in the mechanics. So all I really want to talk about today is the economics, because we'd be here until tomorrow if I tried to explain the mechanics to you. Next slide. So I'm going to give you a real simple example. I made these numbers up, but I based on Serv Denton's project, which we completed in December of 2018. Next slide. Let's suppose we have an organization, and they have a project they want to complete that's going to cost $10 million, okay? They have $7 million of available capital. Next slide. And you notice I said available capital. I did not say cash in the bank. In our case, we needed about $7 million. We had about $3 million in the bank, and we had secondary borrowing to make up the difference. Next slide. So what we really need is an investor who's going to kick in the extra $3 million, and everything will be perfect. But we don't want to just go out and borrow that, because regular borrowers require nasty things, like you got to pay them interest, you got to pay them back the money. We don't want to do that. You got to report to them every quarter and, you know, make all kinds of financial ratios, et cetera, et cetera. We want somebody who's just going to give us $3 million and go away. And I know that sounds impossible, but it's not. Next slide. Because a new market tax credit is really all about federal government selling tax credits to that investor. And the important thing to remember is they don't just get the tax credit on their $3 million, they get the tax credit on the whole $10 million. And it's a 39% tax credit. So 39% of $10 million is 3.9 million. Next slide. So they're going to pay $3 million for 3.9 million of tax credits. Why would they do that? Next slide. Because, and this is why these deals are always seven-year deals, they don't get the whole 39% in one swoop. It's stepped up. They get 5% each of the first three years and 6% in the last three years. So if you discount it to present value, that's how you get the $3 million. So that's why they get more than the $3 million they put in, they get a credit of 3.9 million. That's their incentive. Next slide. Now, I won't bore you with the details, but the mechanics of that formula basically says, and this is really the essence of the economics of this, is that means that the investor can contribute, depending on interest rates, plus or minus 30% of the whole project, okay? So that's the $3 million that's going to go away. That's the $3 million that's going to be forgiven. If part of your capital included borrowed capital, which in our case it does, that doesn't go away, okay? Next slide. So the answer to the question I start off asking, what is a new market tax credit? It's a federal program that encourages support of qualified community projects by awarding tax credits, and such support can provide plus or minus 30% of the total project costs. Next slide. Just a couple of closing comments on this, and this is based on Serv Denton's experience. That benefit is a loan forgiveness, again, about 30% of the cost. Low interest, again, I'm not going to get into the mechanics of it, but for all practical purposes, you can forget about interest. No principal amortization on that, of that debt. Now, the subordinated debt, where I told you we borrowed a piece of the $7 million, that we do no principal payments on, and we do pay about 6% in interest on that. Very low transaction costs. It's a very flexible structure. As I said, if that organization doesn't have the whole $7 million, in our example, they can borrow some of that. And if you want to repay it early, you can do that, save the interest. The compliance requirements are incredibly simple. First of all, most commercial debt, you have monthly or quarterly requirements, where you have to file all kinds of reports with your lender. Basically, we file annual reports once our audits are done, and there's only three ratios that we have to report. And two of them are coverage ratios, basically, if you're familiar with the phrase, times interest earned. That's it. And in our case, the lender has proven themselves to be a very flexible partner that is fully invested in our success. And next slide, I think that's it. Anybody have any questions? Will we have any kind of entertainment?
I have a quick question, out of curiosity. To be model, it's interesting. What happens if the project goes south? How does that affect investors? Do you still get the new market tax credits?
Yeah, so the project goes south, which rarely happens for a couple of reasons. One, there's extensive underwriting even before we close on the deal. And two, the CDEs are not a commercial bank, and so they are much more able and willing to work with nonprofits if something were to happen. So what would make the deal go south? The most likely scenario would be where one of the, one of the major tenants, say Health Services North Texas, no longer can make its lease payments to us. And so we are not able to make any payments on any debt that we have to help close the deal. That would be a major challenge for us, and we would work with the CDE, and we talked to our consultant today. That happens infrequently, but CDEs want these projects to succeed. If it doesn't succeed, they have to take that project, those tax credit allocations, and pull it back and go out to the marketplace, and they don't want to do that. That's a lot of work on their part. The failure rate is almost unheard of, and that's not from me talking. It's Mark Foster, who is a tax credit attorney in Dallas. So risk is, the risk is in making sure that we have good nonprofits that are able to make their lease payments. And so that's why we spend a lot of time and effort making sure we bring in ones that are going to be very successful. And that's why we're really wanting to make sure we, the one for the second floor is key. If we can't find a good investor or a good tenant for that second floor, then we're probably going to have to re-scope the project to just a one-story structure that is much more affordable. The moment we go to second stories, that just costs the project $300,000. more affordable. The moment we go to second stories, that just costs the project $300,000 for stairwells and an elevator. So that's where we are right now in that whole conversation. Thank you.
But there's other ramifications if it goes south.
I was speaking more hypothetically. I don't have concern about this particular project. Just hypothetically, just wanted to add in that case, yeah.
So now, if the project goes south, so the city of Denton has some lien against Serv Denton for a part of the project that they funded. It's subordinate to the new market tax credit loan. The new market, or the Serv Denton is right now valued at $7.2 million. We have $2.8 million in debt. Whoever takes that property over, and we design our buildings to be very commercially repurposed, easily repurposed. Another health clinic could move in and operate the health center if we were to close. And then, but there's plenty of dollars within the overall deal to make sure that the new market tax credit investor, or that let, any debt on that deal gets paid back. And then, I'm not going to say that the city of Louisville would not be made whole, would be made whole, but there will probably be a pretty good return on that investment. So, all right, thank you.
So we're still, I mean, right now, this is really for information purposes. So this is just the beginning of kind of the foray into this, but we wanted to make sure council got a baseline of understanding of what new market tax credits are, what the terminology is. There are some things that we still need to work out, the subordination of a loan, if there are other opportunities. Other than that, those are things we need to work out between our attorneys, their attorneys, the bank's attorneys, and Serv Louisville's attorneys. So, right now, we've given them a forgivable loan up to 10 years, as long as they keep operating for 10 years, and they can, they, that's forgivable.
But that's on phase one.
That's on phase one. Now, phase two, they have no, I mean, they are, to be able to leverage these new market tax credits, they're going to need to utilize the land that we have helped them purchase, that we have a lien on. So that affects our lien, potentially. Potentially, there's a subordination. Potentially, there's a having to pay us off for what we had put into it to begin with. We need to work through all those details. But we wanted to, we wanted you guys to know that phase two, there is interest. There is a interest to move faster than probably we had anticipated originally, but without using these tools, it is unlikely we'll get a phase two. So.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, we want to make this, and we view this arrangement very different than we do at Serv Denton. We are completely independent of the city for all intents and purposes. That's not the case here. We are joined at the hip, and we want to make this work for the city of Louisville. I have a slide I could show you that shows the number of people in poverty in ZIP Code 75067, number one in Denton County, by the way, and has the lowest penetration of affordable healthcare of any ZIP Code in Denton County.
That's true.
This project will fix that problem. Is there a risk involved? Absolutely. Nothing ventured, nothing gained. My job is to make sure this works for both the city of Louisville and Serv Louisville, and we'll turn over every rock, and we did that for Serv Denton. I mean, it was, it wasn't easy. Things like this aren't easy. But if we're all committed to the same goal, then I'm confident we can work through that in a way that both, all parties are satisfied.
So do you, you have one of these for Serv Denton?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay. Let me ask you something, because you said you're the CFO of Serv Louisville?
Yep.
But you're the CFO of Serv Denton. You're the...
I'm the CEO of Serv Denton, and I'm the board chair of Serv Louisville. Does that cause a concern?
Yeah, it does. If Louisville's going to be completely independent, how does a CFO sit on both organizations? And are we going to get a chief executive officer, or chief, or...
That was never the intention, but that's why the chart I showed earlier, we showed this relationship by William and Ashley are on the Serv Denton board. Okay.
That's, it did not look completely independent to me then.
So they're affiliate, they're an affiliate. So by definition, an affiliate means that they share board members, but there's also independent board members between Serv Denton and Serv Louisville.
Right. I'm not so much talking about board members as I am staff.
So they are, so remember, they, they...
Serv Louisville has no employees.
Right. That was my question. Are you there interim, or, and then you're going to...
He's billing. He's billing for his services. That's what he's doing.
So is Serv Louisville going to have their own director?
No. Serv Denton employee resides in Serv Louisville. Her name's Kristin Grammeling.
Okay. The reason I'm bringing this up is because we had something similar to this, and we went three and a half years, and it fell apart, and Denton County Substance Abuse Coalition lost everything, because everything wasn't separate. And that quote affiliate, which turned out to be a parent, you know, a parent or umbrella over it, got it all. So I've got an issue with staff co-mingling. If this is a truly an independent Louisville nonprofit, their own 501(c)(3), I just, I have an issue with co-mingling of staff. They need to have their own.
That's never was what was discussed or we presented. We always said it would be Serv Denton staff, and then we have an agreement that the Serv Louisville board approved on management and cost sharing. And so that agreement's really important from an audit perspective, so that we comply with generally accepted accounting principles. So we go through a pretty rigorous process every month to reconcile what are Serv Denton costs and Serv Louisville costs. And as far as I'm concerned, I'm going to do, and have, by the way, everything I can to make Serv Louisville a success.
So the boards are separate?
The boards are separate.
Yes.
And they have a separate audit.
Okay. Our boards were separate too. In greater Dallas County, alcohol and drug abuse came in and wiped it.
Ma'am, I can't speak to that. I can only speak to...
I was just telling you, it has happened, it's been burned, we've been burned. And I'm worried, if we truly are separate, I'm just worried that they don't have their own director and stuff.
So the end, so what is the worry that you're, the end result that you're concerned? You're concerned about if Serv Louisville, you're concerned about what? The financials?
Financial, you've got...
The co-mingling of finances?
The co-mingling of salary and financials, and on down the road, if they're acting as executive director and chief financial officer of both, of both organizations, and we truly are independent of one another, it's conflict.
So the hard part, I think, going back to...
And I guess because I've been burned, and it's severely snake, and it literally shut an entire agency down.
So when we first did the feasibility study, we hired Serv...
It's needed, don't get me wrong.
No, no, I know. We hired Serv Denton to come in and do the study.
Right.
And so Serv Denton came in and did the study, and then determined it was feasible, and then council decided to fund it. The, although it is separate legal entities, separate financials, and we have the accounting to go back and forth, right now, it's not open, and there's not a staff person necessarily. Is there going to be a staff person that's going to be housed?
Two people are going to be moving in this week.
Right. So that will be in, in the facility?
Serv Louisville.
Okay. Do they don't work for...
But they're Serv Louisville staff?
No, they're, they're all Serv Denton employees, but they're dedicated to Serv Louisville. Most of their time is allocated to Serv Louisville. You are never going to get our intellectual property if you're a separate entity. That's what you're, that's what you're buying, is our intellectual property is part of this. You were never going to get that if they were two separate entities with two separate staffs. There's a reason William and Ashley are on the board of Serv Denton to provide you all the transparency, and Ashley sits on our finance committee of Serv Denton. Do you see our financial statements? Are they rigorous? Yeah. So we try to be as transparent as possible, but I have a board in Serv Denton that says, well, we're just not going to, you know, give our stuff away, our intellectual property away unless there's this kind of arrangement, which is a very common arrangement in the nonprofit world. Affiliate structures are used all the time.
So it's an affiliate, it's not truly a complete independent organization?
The land is owned by Serv Louisville, a nonprofit in the state of Texas. Serv Denton has no authority over that property.
Well, I'm thinking of it like a franchise. That's what we did before.
It's not a franchise.
Okay. I was trying to pull a, pull a comparison, using...
I will...
Okay, I'm just...
It's an affiliate.
So, so I think what I'm hearing here is we need to create some comfort for Ms. Kate, based on a historical, I mean, we can't speak to it, and I don't know what the, what the details are, so I don't want to conflate this with, with something that maybe is not the same structure. I do want to be clear, Serv Denton has a model. They know how to make it work.
And it's an excellent model, and I am not against this at all. I'm trying to work this out. I mean, you think it's going to be independent, but then it's Serv Denton's all the staff on it, and I'm going, this doesn't compute to me, for other reasons. I wanted this done 25, 28 years ago. So this is a wonderful concept and everything. I didn't completely understand the structure until now.
But Kristin Grammeling and Allison Quisenberry are now, will be officing this week in Louisville. That's where...
Quisenberry.
Yes. And so, you know, that was our commitment to you all, and 90% of their time is Serv Louisville.
So, other questions? I, there's, there's more conversation and walking through on this side, just to create some comfort and get some better understanding, as I get that.
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
And just because I don't want to assume anything. Separate bank accounts. Is there separate bank accounts?
Separate bank accounts.
Separate financials, including separate bank accounts.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Because my luggage is from one A, one B district, something like that.
Separate, separate check signers.
You've kind of, you've been a little bit too.
Yes, right, yes, right.
Separate check signers.
That might be a great idea.
Separate financial statements, separate audits. Serv Louisville's already been through a first audit. By a recognized CPA who specializes in nonprofits.
And I think, at the end of the day, we've got to look at what are we trying to achieve here, right? I mean, we're trying to achieve a place where residents in Louisville don't have to go all over the county to get the services that they desperately need.
Oh, I'm with you.
And so if we can get that all under one hat, and we can get everybody comfortable, I mean, we're already there. We've already made this decision, and we're not making that back.
Yeah, I mean, it's a little light now.
Yeah. So let's make sure everybody's comfortable, though, and that you understand if there's some gaps there, so I get that.
We were very intentional putting Ashley on the finance committee. Agreed. For very, for these very concerns, and we are going to be as transparent as any organization.
I think the only question I heard out of Ronnie's that gave me, like, what I love some clarity, if Serv Denton collapsed, are we independent enough that we can keep going?
Yeah. We've got separate accounting records, separate bank accounts, separate insurance policies.
But we don't have separate staff.
Well, those staff would have to be...
So the staff would go bye-bye.
And we'd have to, we'd have to add, we'd have to add staff. But we run that risk every day of employment.
But you would, you would gain all of our systems and processes.
Oh, right, right.
I mean, we're implementing those now, and, yeah, you may have to go hire someone, but, okay.
I just would, and it wasn't more so that, that they would collapse, okay? It's more so that there would be certain, on down the road, three, four years, everybody got comfortable, and all of a sudden Serv Denton wanted to do something different over here, and they did it, just because of the affiliate status, and the head staff being, being Serv Denton, not Serv Louisville.
I think those protections are in the loan agreement.
Okay.
Okay.
That's good.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Other questions? All right, then we are going to be done with workshop, workshop, so we closed the workshop session. We're going to go back into regular session. And next up is Louisville Citizens University graduation. All right, we are going to come back into regular session, and it is 7:23 PM. Tonight, I have the distinct pleasure of congratulating our Louisville Citizens University. And do we know which, which class this is? I don't have that. Do you guys know which class you are? There, that's the answer I was looking for. Outstanding. So we've been doing this for a few years now, and for those of you who maybe are watching on TV, or you're here and don't really know much about our Citizens University, CU was designed for residents to get a better understanding of what it is the city actually does. We make a lot of assumptions in this world, and we live in a pretty amazing country. But things like the water coming on in your tap, and your neighbor's house not falling down, and those types of things all happen because there are systems and processes that have been put in place. And the Citizens University is the opportunity to get in and take a look at all those different, I like to call them business units. I mean, when you look at what the city does, each one of the things that we do is a multimillion-dollar business unit. And Claire happens to sit over, you know, 1,000 employees that do all these different businesses. And so being able to have our residents understand and be very clear and open and transparent with how your tax dollars work, what are the benefits that come from living in Louisville, what, what is this community made up of, and what are the rules, and how do I get involved, and how do I stay involved, and how do I make sure that it's running the way I would like my city to run? That all gets covered in Citizens University. And I want to thank Julie, who's not here, but also Jennifer, who have done a yeoman's job again, making sure that everybody gets through this program. I want to thank all of the staff members that take their time. And again, these are folks that, after their, their regular day job, they have to come in and they do presentations on what they do. And of course, they're all really passionate about their jobs, so it's not a burden at all to come in and give those types of presentations. I know it's always exciting when I pop in to see what's new and what's going on. So I hope for those, those staff members who continue to do that, thank you so much. But most importantly, to the graduating class, I want to thank you guys for investing your time in your home. At the end of the day, it's investing your time in your home. It may not be the four walls that you live in, but it's definitely the four borders that you, that you choose to live in. So I want to thank you for that. It's critically important that we have lots of viewpoints, lots of input, and this is a great way to do it, especially in today's really busy world. So thank you for that. We do have a few folks. Is this, these are the folks that are here tonight? Okay, got it. So what we're going to do is we're actually going to call everybody up, hand you your certificate. I'm going to ask you to stay up here, because we're going to do a quick class photo, if you don't mind at the end, so. And if I butcher a name, please, please show some grace. I appreciate you all. First up, we have Amber Barna. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. I've got John Brooks. Appreciate you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Carmen Esteso. Can I come close? Thank you. Jane Falarowitz. Good to see you. Thank you. Eleanor Glassman, and I think we have her son here. I've got Austin Jakuts. I didn't get it that bad. No. Sorry, Austin, we don't have you here tonight. Jack Manuel. Jack, thank you. Appreciate you. Joshua Peterson. Winston Peterson. Thomas Smith. Arun Vijay. And one, one more not here. We'll get those, we'll get those to those folks. So here is your June 2023 graduating... Citizens University class. We'll figure it out. Stephen will tell us where to go. Got it. All right. Thank you, y'all. And now, I know since you've been through Citizens University, you are going to attend city council meetings from here on out and just take up all your Tuesday evenings, right? You can't fault Famer Church for trying. I appreciate y'all. And for those of you who are watching, we have three different programs like this for our residents. So Citizens University is kind of the broad scopes of the city. And then we also have a Citizens Fire and a Citizens Police Academy, so you can kind of do the deep dive into both of those departments. So I'd encourage you to hop onto the city website, sign up, and see what you can do. There's usually a waiting list for these programs, which is outstanding. But we'd love for you to take. And just because you've taken one doesn't mean you can't take all three. I mean, it's like Pokemon. You got to catch them all. All right. Next up, Item D, a public hearing. There was a Scrivener's error on this one, and the acreage is 3.4 acres as opposed to 2.295. So this is a public hearing, consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change from heavy industrial district zoning to light industrial district zoning on approximately 3.4 acres legally described as Lot 1, Block A, 121 Railroad Edition, located on the east side of South Railroad Street, approximately 1,300 feet south of State Highway 121 Business, as requested by Greg Smith, Monaco Pinnacle, on behalf of ALW Land Properties LLC, the property owner, case number 23-04-7-Z. MP Garage's, the applicant plans to develop a self-service storage facility on South Railroad Street. Since the heavy industrial zoning district does not allow self-storage facilities, a zone change to the light industrial district is necessary. The light industrial district requires an SUP for the proposed self-storage facility use. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval 6 to 0 on May 2, 2023, and it is recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. We do have Michelle Berry, AICP, our planning manager, available for questions. Counsel, do we have a motion?
Motion to close the public hearing and approve.
I have a motion and a second. I also do have Mr. Gage Smith from MP Garage here to answer questions, and he is here in support. So we have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Motion to close the public hearing passes. Counsel, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately 3.4 acres legally described as Lot 1, Block A, 121 Railroad Edition, located on the east side of South Railroad Street, approximately 1,300 feet south of State Highway 121 Business, from heavy industrial district zoning to light industrial district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the zoning amendment herein made promotes the health, safety, and general welfare of the city, providing for repealer severability and a penalty and an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Counsel, please vote. Motion passes 5 to 0. Item 2, public hearing, D2. Consideration of an ordinance renaming West Main Street from the center point of the Main Street Bridge over I-35 East to a point 220 feet west of the center point of said bridge, being the approximate west right-of-way line of I-35 East. The Texas Department of Transportation is beginning construction of the I-35 East interchange at Main Street in Louisville. As with the previous interchanges at Garden Ridge, FM 407, and Fox Avenue, the city has designed and paid for aesthetic improvements to be constructed by Tech dot at Main Street. After learning the words "fighting farmers" could not be included in the decorative murals, the city council or workshop on May 15, 2023 directed staff to move forward with changing the street name for this short street segment, thus allowing the city to include the words "fighting farmers" on the bridge face. Staff has since prepared the subject ordinance, which would officially change the name of West Main Street to Fighting Farmers Way, from the center point of the Main Street Bridge over I-35 East to a point 220 feet west of the center point of that bridge. It is recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption. We do have Mr. David Salmon, our city engineer, available for questions. If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Motion to close the public hearing passes. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, what is wrong with my name? I need to put this in the next room. I move that we approve renaming the bridge Fighting Farmers Way.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
It wasn't up there, ma'am.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
Just to clarify, it's a motion to approve the ordinance?
Yes.
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council renaming West Main Street from the center point of the Main Street Bridge over Interstate 35E, I-35 East, to a point 220 feet west of the center point of said bridge, being the approximate west right-of-way line of I-35 East, providing for repealer severability and an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
City Council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Counsel. Item E, visitor citizen forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping a feat, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. City Secretary, do we have any public comment? With that, we will move on to the consent agenda. Item F, all following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. City Secretary, do we have any e-commerce or speaker cards?
We have.
We actually have two cards.
I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Consent agenda approved, 5 to 0. Item G, regular hearing. Consideration of an ordinance of the Louisville City Council deleting and reserving for future use Chapter 4, Article 6, Single Family Inspection Program of the Louisville City Code in order to remove the Single Family Residential Inspection Program and amending the fee schedule by deleting the Single Family Rental Permit Surcharge Fee. In 2008, the city council approved an ordinance to create the Single Family Rental Suspension Program. At the 2020 City Council Retreat, council instructed staff to look at the most common problems regarding property maintenance issues and to develop a program that will allow tenants to anonymously request interior inspections. To make these changes, it is necessary to delete the current ordinance, and in its place, the department has created a standard operating procedure to ensure that single-family rentals continue to be inspected. Deleting the current ordinance will also remove the Single Family Rental Permit Surcharge Fee from the fee schedule. The goal is to simplify administration of the SFR Inspection Program, allowing it to gain efficiencies and better promote and protect the health, safety, and general welfare of the community. It's recommended that the city council approve the amended ordinance and fee schedule as set forth in the caption above. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the amended ordinance and fee schedule as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council deleting and reserving for future use Chapter 4, Article 6, Single Family Inspection Program of the Louisville City Code in order to remove the Single Family Residential Inspection Program and amending the fee schedule by deleting the Single Family Rental Permit Surcharge Fee, providing repealer severability and effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item 8, consideration of appointment to the position of city secretary and authorization for the mayor to execute an employment agreement. The current city secretary will retire effective June 30, 2023, and the appointment of her replacement is therefore necessary. It's recommended that the city council make an appointment to the position of city secretary and authorize the mayor to execute the related employment agreement. As such, in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.074, Personnel City Secretary, discuss and consider hiring of a new city secretary, conduct additional interview if necessary, and all matters incident and related thereto. We are going to move We're going to go ahead and reconvene back into regular session. Counsel? I need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve appointing Thomas Harris to the position of city secretary and authorize the mayor to execute the related employment agreement as set forth in the caption.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item 9, consideration of two alternative standards associated with architectural standards for two proposed industrial buildings on approximately 4.7 acres legally described as Waters Ridge Edition Phase 2, Lot 4R1 and Lot 4R2, Block I, zoned light industrial located at 1940 Lake Point Drive, as requested by Douglas Weaver of Weaver Engineering LLC, on behalf of Noel Victory Investments LLC, the property owner, case 2302-1-ALT STD. The owner plans to construct two office warehouse buildings on a vacant property in the Waters Ridge Business Park and within the IH 35E Corridor Overlay District. The following two alternative standards related to architecture have been requested to reduce the brick or stone requirement on Building A from 80% brick or stone to 18.49% large format tile, and B to reduce the brick or stone requirement on Building B from 80% to 18.44% large format tile. The Overlay District Board recommended unanimous approval 6 to 0 on June 6, 2023. It is recommended that the city council approve the alternative standards as set forth in the caption above. We do have Michelle Berry, our planning manager, available for questions. I do also have Mr. Douglas Weaver available for any questions, and he is here in support. Counsel, if there are no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the alternative standards as set forth in the caption.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you'd please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item 10, discussion and consideration of appointments to various city boards, commissions, and committees. Various terms of office on the city's boards, commissions, and committees are expiring. Those positions have been identified and current appointees notified. The board, commission, committee appointment process electronic notebook has been created for city council's review. Data sheets for members requesting reappointment and all new applicants have been included in the electronic notebook. It is recommended that the city council proceed with the appointments to various city boards, commissions, and committees as set forth in the caption above. And these are to appoint folks for two-year terms unless otherwise noted. Counsel, I'll entertain. Reappointments and appointments.
So just read through the.
Read through, yeah, if you don't mind, the blues and the greens.
No problem. For the Animal Service Committee, reappointment for Ronnie Cade for Place 1, reappointment for James Cooley for Place 3, and reappointment for Beverly Freed for Place 5. Place number 7 will remain vacant. For the Arts Advisory Board, now, is the Greens is an appointment?
Green is an appointment.
Okay. Michael Shepard for Place 1. Place number 2 will remain vacant. Jennifer Austin for Place 3 as a reappointment, and Place 5 as an educational position will remain open. Thomas Smith for Place 7, to place him for an appointment, and Kristi Martin for Place 9 for reappointment. Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee, these are all reappointments. Adora Butler, Place 1. Chris Crawford, Place 3. Kathy Stott, Place 5. Johnny Taylor, Place 7. Louisville Local Government Corporation, all reappointments. Ronnie Cade, Place 1. Bob Troyer, Place 2. Brandon Jones, Place 3. William Meredith, Place 4. TJ Gilmore, Place 5. Louisville Parks and Library Development Corporation, 4B. TJ Gilmore, Place 1 for reappointment. Elaine Rochard, Place 2 for an appointment. Karen Locke, Place 3 for reappointment. Ronnie Cade, Place 4 for reappointment. Brandon Jones, Place 5 for reappointment. William Meredith, Place 6 for reappointment, and appointment of Jennifer Marvel in Place 7. Library Board, these three will be reappointments. Rachel Maloney for Place 1. Jennifer Marvel for Place 3. Vivek Gupta for Place 5, and we'll be appointing Zach Manuel for Place 7. Old Town Design Review Committee, these are two reappointments. Amy Puckett for Place number 1. Odin Klack for Place number 3. Place number 5 will be left vacant until we can find a candidate. Park Board, these are three reappointments. Angela Llewellyn, Place 1. Cheryl Brennan, Place 3. Julia Sykes, Place 5. John Brooks, Place 7 will be appointed to the position, and Elaine Rochard will be reappointed for Place 9. Planning and Zoning Commission, Jack Tidwell for Place 2 will be appointed. Rick Llewellyn for Place 4 will be appointed. Ara Malik for Place 6 will be reappointed. Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number 1 Board of Directors, Place 1 will be Bob Troyer. Place 2 will be William Meredith in Place 3, and Ronnie Cade in Place number 5 for appointments. The county appointees will be Donna Kearns for Place 6, and Fred Whitfield for Place number 7. TERs Increment Reinvestment Zone Number 2 Board of Directors, we will reappoint William Meredith for Place 1. Ronnie Cade for Place 3. Kristen Green for Place 5. We will be appointing, well, we'll reappoint the county appointees. Tanya Mastin-Yale for Place 6. Yvonda Coleman for Place 7. Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number 3 Board of Directors, reappointment of TJ Gilmore for Place 2, and Brandon Jones for Place 4. We'll reappoint Bobby Mitchell as a county appointee for Place 6, and Ron Marchant as county appointee for Place number 7. Tax Reinvestment Zone Number 4 Board of Directors, William Meredith will be reappointed in Place 1. Bob Troyer reappointed in Place 2. Ronnie Cade reappointed in Place 3, and TJ Gilmore reappointed for Place 4. Zoning Board of Adjustment, reappointment of Pamela Goodwin for Place 1. We'll be appointing Mary Carmen Esteso for Place 3, and we'll be appointing Kimberly Turner as alternate number 1. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. I'll make that motion.
I will entertain a second.
Second.
I have a second. I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you would please vote.
Mayor, I'm registering my vote, but I'm having major issues. I'm now off.
Okay, so the voting.
I mean, as far as the computer goes.
Okay. So that'll be a vote of 5 to 0 to approve.
Never mind.
The appointments and reappointments to city boards and commissions. Thank you, Jennifer, Liz, you got everything you need there? Okay. Item H, reports. Reports about items of community interest regarding which no action will be taken. Counsel Member Kelly, you mind if we start with you?
No report today, Mayor.
Counselwoman Jones?
No report.
Counselwoman Cade?
No report.
Counselwoman Meredith?
Well, I have a report. I've got library activities for the week. Shrink Your Fandom for teens age 13 to 18, Tuesday, June 20, 2 to 3:30. No registration required at the Bennett Program Room. Book for Murder Book Club for adults, Tuesday, June 20, 2 to 3. No registration required at the Small Conference Room. Loom Weaving for teens age 13 to 18, Thursday, June 22, 6:30 to 7:30. Registration is required at the Bennett Program Room, and that's all I've got.
Counselwoman Troyer?
Yes, Mayor. I have a number of items for the Louisville Grand Theater for the next several weeks. First of all, the City Speaker Series, presenting Javier Avila, The Trouble With My Name. First of all, the City Speaker Series, presenting Javier Avila, The Trouble With My Name, presented by the City of Lewisville, and that's on June 22. Black Box Songwriter Series, features Terry Hendricks with Lloyd Manes, presented by the City of Lewisville, and that's on June 25. And as always, Friday nights, the Acoustic Jam Session presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville. A number of activities going on regularly, or some... One is Unity and Service Summit, presented by the City of Lewisville. This is a single event on June 29. And then Pilates in the Plaza presented by Pilates in the City Wednesdays, and this is a change from last year, so it'll be Wednesdays. Yoga in the Plaza presented by Blue Anju Studios Thursdays, also a change from last year. And Tai Chi in the Plaza presented by Lowell Johnson, it's on Saturdays. And there are a number of exhibitions going on right now. First of all, Rebecca James, winner of the 2022 Fresh Ideas Exhibition, is presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville, and that goes on through July 8. Members Show Artist Retrospective presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville through July 8. Collaborations at the Trail presented by Prairie Trail Elementary School and Marcus High School through July 1. And Botanicals presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville through June 24. And that's what I have.
Thank you, sir. City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor. I do have a report. Mayor, city council, in your packets, there's a summary of the bond sales that we just took to market at the end of May. We did both the general obligation refunding and improvement bonds and waterworks and sewer system revenue refunding bonds. We had nine bidders for the GEO bonds and seven for the water and sewer. That generated a good number of interest, and a lot of that, I think, is driven by our AAA bond rating. The low bid on the GEO refunding and improvement bonds was 3.56%. There was also a refunding component where the city was able to save in excess of $251,000 or 2.77% from the bonds that were refunded. On the water and sewer side, the net interest cost for that issue was 3.4%. And there was also savings from a refunding portion there, $85,000 or 3.9% there. We've enjoyed some great rates because of our AAA rating, and included in that packet is a table showing interest rates that we've seen from our issues over the last several years. Closing on the bonds will take place on June 28, where we'll be able to fund those capital projects and do the final refunding on those bonds. So I'd be happy to answer any questions or the more detailed information is included in the packet.
Thank you, Dave. Ms. Berry?
No reports.
Thank you. No report. Nada, nada. I know I got a report here.
Shantae's hiding. We are currently, or, excuse me, Lewisville Lake is currently sitting at 521.53 feet, about just shy of 98% full.
Salute.
Thank you, sir. Super simple. I want to thank staff for an amazing ribbon cutting for our splash pad here in Old Town. For those of you who maybe had some concerns or weren't sure what was going to be happening, you got to go check it out. It is amazing facility, and it has really opened up that space. For those of you who don't know, I remember just seeing a fence, and there was a big empty grass space behind the splash, or the pool at the time, and I never realized that that was a usable space back there. Now it just opens right up. I don't know about y'all, but if I had littles and a big family going on, I think that would be a pretty cool place to go have a big old barbecue. So come on out, check out the splash pad. It's really exciting, and we've got other great stuff coming online over the next few months for the city. So thank you, staff. Thank you to all of the folks that were there, and thanks to the kids for using the snot out of it this weekend. So with that, we have no closed session, so as there is no further action to be taken on tonight's agenda, we are adjourned.
Minutes.
8:20.